Good morning, everybody. We'll open our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think the first thing that was on our agenda was an animal shelter bid opening. I think we're still lacking a permit.
We're waiting on a permit from the state for the building, so I would motion to return the bids received, and we advertise that following receipt of the final permits from the state.
I'll start.
Can you guys change your microphones? I didn't even hear that motion.
The motion was to return the bids received pending receipt of permits from the state. We are lacking permits from the state for the animal shelter. As soon as we get those done, then we will readvertise animal bids at that time.
Okay. Joel Ling, you're next.
Good morning. I just wanted to come before you to get your blessing to proceed with an ordinance that will require all the vendors who do the pay through accounts payable go direct deposit. We've had some issues with vendors holding checks for up to six months before cashing them, which are quite substantial. We're also having issues with the mail and the delivery of checks. So, we're going to try to, with the ordinance, we want to try to eliminate the problems that we're currently having. So, I just need your blessing to move forward with drafting an ordinance.
I have no problem with that. You guys?
The motion approved.
Yeah, might as well make it official, yeah.
So, I accept the motion to be allowed, Joel, to go forward with the ordinance that she's working on for direct deposit advantage.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor. John, are you on Zoom?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay. There's a couple of letters of support in front of you three. There's on charter communications, respect for the others in front here. They are bidding on adding another 900 addresses to the high-speed internet system, and we see several letters supporting both of them with the state of Indiana. They don't watch show papers under this program, so we're going to support both of them. Competition doesn't work, so if you guys can sign those, if you guys are looking for those to each of those respective internet providers, get a letter by, people sign that both letters. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So... It's just a letter of support, right? Just for nine hundred, additional?
Right, there's no money involved on our part, and thanks, just saying, we would really love to have you close to this.
Okay.
This was one of the things I did make it on the agenda, and I don't know how to address this, the law for food bank needs to cooperate, and there's agreement that they need to sign about seeing the one five thousand dollars to help them get stuff into nonprofit. Right now, they're operating on the policy fire card nonprofit status, but it'd be really helpful for the state, especially in the Laurel, Peter Center, if we could help them do that, and I do have enough money in my helping to take care of that, though if you would consider signing that agreement that works directly with the food bank, if that's out and get them to work with us.
Okay. Let's do that one first. Say you got the money in your ready grant?
Uh, the help rate.
Okay. Anybody make a motion for me to sign it?
Yeah, I'm gonna motion to allow Tom to sign the application, the five hundred one C three application for the law for food bank.
Second. All in favor. Next, a letter of support for Frontier Communications and Spectrum for the extra 900 homes to be hooked up through high-speed internet.
I didn't have one from Spectrum, the fact that I said from, I was going to ask John why, or is it just, do you have one from Spectrum that I should have seen, or is it just a letter of support for Frontier?
Actually, we did have one each, and if you don't have that one, I can send it over. But essentially, it was the same letter, just using slightly different language to support each one, and they're good to try to put a contract or those nine plus ones. If you can't read, I'll sign them, I'm okay. Okay, do you have a copy?
Thank you. We have one for next level connections. Did you see that one?
I saw the next level connection, I thought that was the grant itself.
It's to support broadband expansion.
Right, that is the next level connection for broadband grant, I didn't see anything referencing Spectrum, but John's saying there should be two letters here, make a motion that we authorize Tom to sign, we have commissioners, the letters of recommendation for Spectrum, and Frontier to go forward with the broadband project.
Second. All in favor.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah. Right about there? Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here. Fay, thank you for your help. Thank you for your help. My name is Patrick O'Donnell. I'm here on behalf of Silential Energy, based out of Carmel, Indiana, 15-year, what I'll call complex renewable energy engineering firm. And what we are not, is we are not industrial, large solar farm, that's not the type of engineering firm that we are. What we do focus on, and what we're out speaking to counties about, is what we've coined as energy debt. And we focus on identifying through thorough analysis, what I'll, oops, I'm going to give you a little handout, if okay, here, that gives a nice visual of the energy debt that we're talking about. So, county courthouses, correctional facilities, jails, on the municipal side wastewater treatment, wastewater, water treatment, wastewater treatment, excuse me, regional R E M Cs, that's really who we work with. And if I may approach you with the handout, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. This... I just have three. So, what we've identified, and what I'm showing to you right there, is actually a project that we completed with the wastewater treatment facility in Carmel. And really, to make it simple, the red line is the path that they were on with regard to utility expense at their wastewater treatment facility, and we're seeing these similar-type results in correctional facilities, jails. And the green is, after we did the thorough analysis of their energy use, is what we showed the path that they could be on. And ultimately, they did the project, and that's the result that we're seeing. So, really, again, energy debt is what we're out having conversations about, and my hope is to have a conversation with my team, with a decision-maker, decision-makers, that would be interested in having one of those deep-dive analysis of utility use at some of the facilities that I've mentioned. Any questions at all?
No.
Nope.
I have one question. To do the analysis, is there a cost?
To the analysis, no, no. We come in, that's part of working with analysis, is having that analysis done on the front end, and if it makes sense, then the conversation continues.
Okay. Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Who's there right here? Daryl?
I guess we're up for the sewer project. In front of you, you have two resolutions to create the RFPQ committee. I assume that you want to place me as the coordinator. The commissioners are the committee, the commissioners will make the final decisions. My only position is to advise the commissioners, as far as the RFPQ, not whether you do a sewer district or not, that's up to the commissioners, not me. There should be two resolutions there, and the other one for the release of an RFPQ, and then another copy there of the proposals. There's a little modification on proposals, I want to add that we need five hard copies provided to us, and I would like to operate through the commissioners' secretaries if I can, and have everything dropped off there, and then I will pick it up there and have a couple other people that are going to have advising me, will we do the RFPQ? Is there any questions?
I didn't have any, just, as I look through this, then, do we just need an official motion appointing you as the coordinator there, or is the only thing that I saw that was left out?
Yeah, I think there's another one in there for a release of an RFPQ.
Yeah, right here.
The advertisement for that, we might wait another week or so yet before we start the advertising for that, but if you sign that last release of the RFPQ, then I can get started and start getting advertisements out for that.
In prior discussion, maybe with economic development, is your appointment as the coordinator to be a commissioner's appointment?
I would assume you guys have the power to appoint or not to appoint. I don't know. Real this one is just for release, so you can put those bids out. Yeah. And the other, I haven't read all the way through yet, it's, it's a committee for the sewer extension project, right? That's just a, we have two separate motions. Two separate resolution numbers, yes. So, this kind of defines it even, the sewer project criteria, right?
Correct.
So, if we establish the committee, I guess we have the right to appoint to it?
Yeah, I just didn't know if they had already appointed Daryl to that position.
I think we already did that, didn't we, Daryl? Didn't we already do that once?
I wasn't here at that, I heard you did.
We can read, we can do it again.
You can do it again or not do it again, it's up to you.
You can do it again, it's no big deal.
I'm not opposed to it, I just thought it was already appointed by economic development.
Do you know, Bill?
So, I, Bill Sherman, but I believe at one of the previous meetings, and you guys can duplicate it again, just to be sure, that Daryl was asked, was going to be the lead on the extension process, and then we wanted to verify whether the grant was going to be transferred over to the county, which it has, the county has that going for them. And so, what Daryl will need at this point is those two papers, so he can advertise and put the request for proposals out there, and then, is there section 22 or something? There should be two pieces for you guys to endorse. Most importantly is the request for proposal, and you would appoint him as your lead on the subject, and then when he receives those proposals back 30 days from now, or whatever that timeframe may be, there's this code to follow, which he's aware of, or we're all aware of, and then, once we follow that code and those are received back, I think he just asked that they would return to the commissioner's room, and then he would pick them up from there, and then he will determine who he has looked at, looked them over. If he wants to, three, five, six, whatever, that's his business, he'll put, have those people look them over. They'll come back then to the commissioners and say, we've looked these applications over, and we want to sit down and do go through what I refer to as a scoping process, which then everyone will be engaged, and that'll be, I want to say, public at that point, so that they go through a scoping process. So, this request for proposal is basically to tell, ask for anybody who is interested, who has qualifications and a desire to do it with a dollar figure attached, to submit an application. It's not actually telling you, we're going to go up this street and turn right on this curve, and we're putting in this here box at this location, it's just, once we get through this, then they'll go into what they call a scoping process. That way, it's open-ended to any system or anybody who's interested in it, it's open. So, if that answered your question, but I believe, if you want to, I think he's been asked to be lead, but if you want to do that again, you can.
Is there any resolution numbers, please?
Yeah, we have to get them from Carl. You have a couple of resolution numbers, Carl?
Question four.
Ah.
Four.
We need it.
Four.
Both of them?
Four and five.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number four, and it's authorizing the release of a quest for proposals for the sewer project upon resub. Second.
All in favor.
Next one, it's going to be resolution five. Just to appoint Daryl Kramer, I guess, as the lead on this committee for the sewer expansion project.
Motion to be approved, resolution number five, appointing Daryl Kramer as our lead on the project.
Second. All in favor. Next thing is our two-year capital improvement plan. I think it's someone, got a new percent, Indiana code. Think it's all been completed, hasn't it, Carl? You guys had a chance to look at it, because projects that, lot of for the highway and then economic development.
The majority, though, for the economic development is Kelly's health insurance.
Yeah. So, I will make a motion that we adopt or approve the capital, two-year capital improvement plan for 24 and 25.
Second.
All in favor. the handicap entrance. I think there was a mistake on the invoice from DLZ. And I think we owe them, what is it, $2,000 and $100? Current payment due $15,752.30, which is paid out of the ARPA money. Any questions on finishing paying Amber? I'll make the motion, go ahead and finish paying her. Corrected bid, corrected amount for Amber.
Yeah, I think we need to pay debts to the county, but I'm going to point out, I think this is the, this $15,000 is the additional landscaping that we had a lesser, $10,000 less of bid, and we're allowed to proceed with this. I do think it was a debt of the county, and I'll second Jerry's motion for that, but not a big difference.
Next, we have an invoice from USI for the work they've done at the fairgrounds, which is to be paid out of the ARPA money also, it's for $2,240.99, which I believe it's completed, Derek?
Yes, I believe it is. It should be completed.
I'm starting to make a motion to be approved, invoice from USI, $2,240.99, completion of the park project.
Second. All in favor. Next, we have a resolution to amend the personal policy handbook for the sheriff, E911, for vacation in terms of vacation leave. I think we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and we did change the hours, if you work 36 and a half, that that's what you receive in vacation time. So, we need another resolution number, Carl, six. So, to amend that handbook, resolution 2024-6, adjust the hours scheduled for the time that they actually work.
Make a motion to be approved, resolution 2024-6, to amend the handbook.
Second. Next thing was an amendment to the zoning code. I think we put this off a couple of weeks ago. Changes it from 30 days to 10 days. I know, I see Jenny's here. Nope. You going to speak on? Some folks in Yellow Bank wanted to come in and talk about.
My name is Beth Ely. I guess the first thing that comes to our, that we would like to see changed, our main concern is, how can you, I guess, after 35 years of accumulating plus of their things, I guess, considered to some, it's junk, but we don't think that that 30 or 10 days is enough time for someone to clean up. Not to mention the age, there's more than just to, somebody to go by and have somebody to clean up their junk after this many years. Are they taking into consideration the age of some of our neighbors? Are they considering, if it's winter, and let's be honest, the majority of the people, it's been this way for a long time, and you have somebody coming in, now all of a sudden it bothers them? Well, everybody's views are not the same, everybody has different opinions, so what may, one person may like, the other doesn't. Who defines the junk? Who defines if it bothers them? And another, our concern is, if it doesn't enjoy their property, or harm, or bring harm to somebody else, or why, what's the big deal? I guess our main concern is, we're asking that you give a little more time, I mean, we're not saying that some things don't need attention, but I guess the 30 days and the 10 days, we think that's a little, we just want you to take into consideration that we feel like there should be more time allotted to clean up. And not to mention things to get rid of junk, or things, it costs a lot of money, and some of these that live on social security, or less than that, that don't have a lot of the funds to get rid of their junk.
These timeframes, these timeframes are not to, or for cleanup. You're not required to clean up in 10 days. What this does is establish a timeframe for the property owner to reply to the county, just to let them know that they've acknowledged that there is a problem, and that they and that they in the county can then move forward on a plan. That plan, we realize it may take a year to get a property cleaned up. Uh, but it's just getting acknowledgement from the property owner that there is an issue. Um, it's been brought and uh, 30 days because of the legal requirements that we have. Previously they were putting out a 30-day letter, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, previously they were putting out a letter requiring response for 30 days. If you don't get it wrong, you have to legally, they're required to send out another. All they're doing is shorten that response to 10 days in order to, or that time to 10 days in order to ask the property owner back to us so we know we've gotten this. And so that we move through that process then in maybe 30 days. We probably will likely in four years or so, the time in between. Uh, instead it'd be upwards of 90 days to, to at least get acknowledgement from the property owner that they received that notification. Is that it?
So what if the property owner is not health-wise able to do that or financially set to get rid of their stuff? I mean.
I think they will work with them, right Caitlin? And I've talked to Kurt too. I mean, if they ain't financially able to do it and it takes them a year to do it, as long as they're making some kind of a progress, that's, that's all they care about. So I think the 10 days notices are from 30 is what Tom was talking about. A lot of people won't even respond back, period. You know, so they have to wait another 30 days, then another 30 days till they see if they respond. It's just trying to get them to respond. They don't have to clean up within that 10 days. It's, they'll give them a year if they're making some kind of a progress, you know.
And another thing is, is there anything we can, I guess our concern as well is someone can drive by a property and maybe their view is what they don't like to see. Is there a way that, I mean, I feel like something should be in there that you just can't drive around the county and pick out people's homes or their stuff that bothers you? Everybody has different opinions and views on what's junk and what's not. I think there, and, and I'm sure it's a fine line and, but I feel like that if I had the extra time, I could make a list too, but guess what? Everybody is different. And how do we know that a car sitting there for 40 years isn't sentimental to somebody? Or what they have in their yard, an old tractor or whatever it is concerning. If it doesn't bother your surrounding neighbors, I feel like there should be like a, like if it's not next to your property and adjoining your property or affecting your taxes or your home value. I don't understand why that, I, I feel like something should be in motion as far as not anybody can just. I'm sure that the county has other bigger issues to deal with other than somebody driving around making a complaint. And I'm sure there's legit complaints. I agree with that. I'm not saying that either. And, and I think everybody would agree, but I also feel like that some people that are doing this or making complaints, they could spend their time wisely other than going around and, and something bothers them in their yard.
Can, can you address that Caitlin or Kurt? I mean, we, they don't act at all unless they get a complaint, but I understand some people are just driving around taking pictures and making a complaint, but you're saying they should be able to do that if it doesn't affect their property.
Right. Thank you.
So if somebody comes in, they would have to formally fill out a complaint. They would have to sign their name in order for us to even acknowledge it at all. And then what we would do is we would go out and make sure there is a violation. And if you, sometimes it's something really simple and we just, as long as they talk to us, we can say, hey, here's a list. We'll follow up with an email if you want us to. And then we'll try to get it resolved as quickly as possible. But what we're trying to do today is just get the, the rules from the ordinance to go to the rules of procedure so that we can use our discretion a little better. Right now we have to strictly adhere to the 30 days and the three letters. And then we, if with no contact, we should be going to litigation. But if we move it to the rules of procedure, we'd be able to use our discretion a little bit more. So that's what we're really asking for.
I think what she was asking though is how do we limit one person making 50 complaints or whatever? Just riding around taking pictures or trespassing on people's property and taking pictures? How can we eliminate the, uh, someone just doing that? There's no way.
I don't have an answer to that.
There's somebody on Zoom named Craig Hill that would like to make a suggestion.
Yeah, so this is Craig Hill. I'm thinking so, a letter regarding these ordinance to a renter on my property. Um, I don't reside on that property. I have a copy of that letter. Uh, nor understand the ordinance. I spent five hour and a half trying to find something online that explains the ordinance, um, what you're requiring, when it was sent, what the deadline is. And I live in Carmel. I don't live, own a property down there. It's up there. I'm trying to find out what the situation is with the, uh, letter that was sent to the renters. At, um, 16272 Acquire Ridge Room in Carmel.
Do you guys know who he's talking about? I mean, even though it went to the renters, you as the property owner I think is actually responsible.
Yes.
The letter. Well, I expect that, so, but I, I want a copy of the letter. I haven't been sent the letter. I haven't given any notice. Um, it's a little hard for me to respond, so I'm trying to get to the bottom of what's going on.
Can, can you guys address his questions after the meeting to get him his notification?
Does he just need a phone number to call our office?
Yeah, you can call our office if you want.
He should be able to find our phone number online if he, if he needs to call us, then we can help him out with that.
Well, very hard to find much online regarding this.
Give him the number.
If you have a pen, I can just give it to you right now.
I will.
Okay, 765-647-5731.
647 what?
5731.
5731 Craig?
Right.
And then is, just for confirmation, is your address 3757?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the street number in Carmel, yeah. Thank you. If y'all sent it to the actual owner, not the renter, I think you might help the process. And they made improvements, I'm told by them. I don't, I don't have any information that you sent to me. But it seems like it's a bit of a flaw, I should look up who owns the property.
Right.
Just send it to the owner, not to the renter.
Yeah, it's loaded here. I'll see what our process is there, or there about our process and, and I disagree there.
I mean, I'm sure it's a legitimate complaint, I've been working with it. You know, I need visibility for what you're, you know, what you're, what you're doing. I don't even know what responsibility I have. I can guess, but it'd be nice to get it right from you guys. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. So I, I don't know the answer. I don't, I don't know how you would limit somebody from just riding around taking pictures, you know? If anybody has suggestions, that you'll be open to them.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just had a conversation with somebody the other day and I don't really can. You know, I want to try to, you know, somehow, we want to try to limit and filter those situations where we got poor neighbor relationship and I've just got a neighbor that's complaining on another neighbor. But when you've got a situation and you're a realtor Tom, and you know, so as you drive around, it's not just your neighbor's property or contiguous properties that affect you, but any property in the county can affect your livelihood as a realtor. You know, and the ability to sell that. So to limit that, if there's a justified complaint on whoever can. Yeah, it's just a matter of, you know, follow up and getting those getting to those in building which are just bad faith complaints and which have legitimacy behind it. I mean, if there's any way to improve the process, we're, we're open.
Yeah.
You know, looking at it, I think. But I think number one improvement is just, I said, that was just an assumption in terms of the 30 to 10 is just to let the property owner know. We just discovered an issue here or we didn't, we didn't notify the property or we, you know, sent it to the wrong address possibly. And it's probably possible that I find out. We've notified all the addresses, I'm not sure. But, um, we just need to get that response from them. That they are aware of, of the situation in the property.
Yep.
I'll say one more thing. Beth Ely again. Um, so, and I get that and I appreciate that, but there again, if they're not financially able and I know that, will they work with them then? Will you be willing to work with the office? Will be willing to work with somebody that can't afford or they can't get it done? Like there's some, I mean, not to pick on you, but he's not young. So is, are they gonna help him or is there, is there good, can we, can we put in here some way that there's funds that can help them get rid of this? Like I said earlier, it's, it could be expensive. So would they, would the office work with the residents that really can't afford to get rid of all of their junk? And that's another, that's another question or something to work on.
Yeah, I know Kurt is willing to work with them. I mean, as long as they're making an effort, Jen, to, to do it. I mean, if they haul 10 pieces off a month or whatever, as long as they're making an effort to do it, Kurt's gonna be cool with them. He'll help.
And maybe if the same person or the same people keep complaining, then maybe there should be recup, repercussion on their part. Like if they continue to make accusations against neighbors and just ride around just to find something, maybe they ought to find something else to do with their time.
I don't know. Somebody made a suggestion that we can limit the number of complaints per day per person, but I mean, they could come in and every day and make five complaints every day, but I don't know. You guys all right? Jenny, oh Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on.
What under this, yes and I?
Definition of junk. You know, I've, I read the ordinances, which I don't have good thinking anyway, but anyhow, they don't have a, it's very vague, you know? And then like weeds, you know, we have five acres. How many weeds can we have? How much grass do I need to mow? How much stuff, how many semen mixers or whatever else can I leave outside? Cause I don't have trash outside. I have items, if you want to call it, they don't call it junk. The only thing that we can call junk, maybe the camper, but the camper's been there for several years. No one's had a problem with it. I was using it for storage, but I am tearing it down piece by piece, but it's gonna take me some time. But it's so vague. You could get anybody, anytime. I drive down the road, there's a weed. And you know, it's a nice immaculate yard, but should we, should we jump them, the weed in the middle of the yard? Or the lawn ornament that we don't like? As I don't know the difference between junk and what you call art or what you like. So maybe it should be more specific. You understand what I'm saying? It's so vague that it could be used any way you want to use it. And I don't believe anybody should have big piles of trash thrown around in your yard or stuff like that. But you understand what I'm saying?
I, I do, Gary.
And the, and the notice of 30 days. You're making an effort. They don't respond in 30 days. You do the process. You don't have to speed it up. Like shoot, I got a thing one time for, uh, what do you call it? Where you go to jury duty, which I got a few days after. The jury started, which of course they canceled it, which I didn't know. I called down there and they were like, if you hadn't showed up, we'd have sent a warrant out for your arrest. Well, you gotta get it to me. And they didn't even have the right address on it. You understand what I'm saying about that time? And, and, and I understand, you know, you want to get things done, but I think the 30 days should remain. Because it takes time for people to respond, understand what you want. And I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to be difficult. I mean.
I know what you mean, Gary.
I just need more clarity, because like, like I said, they had a problem with my semen mixer sitting at the corner of my porch, which I moved that. And then somebody complained because I sat on a chair outside my gate. Somebody complained about the chair outside the gate, so I moved that. Then somebody complained that my lawnmower was sitting out in the parking lot with my stuff. So I moved that, but when does it end? I've been here for a long time, never had any problems, and now all of a sudden we have problems. And I also do not appreciate, and I know that's nothing to do with you, being put in the newspaper like common criminals. We were put in their addresses, you know, and all this stuff. Is that necessary? I mean, come on, it's like the perk walk, you know, the little pervert looking at little kids or something and the other. So we put their address in there, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that what you're saying? That you're just a nasty little criminal? I feel like a nasty little criminal. Am I a nasty little criminal?
To me, no, but you know how freedom the press is.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I could also tell these people that I can get all their addresses, put them in the newspaper, as long as you're a public employee. I can put what you do, what your salary is, what your disciplinary actions are, all that stuff is public record.
It is public.
So, you know, if, if they want to keep playing that game, maybe we'll just start putting out ads, okay? I'm just saying it just, when does it end? It's just like we was talking about this at the other meeting. How many pieces is too much? But I never got an answer for it. I got the same question back. When is, when is it enough? Well, that's what I'm asking. When can you have too many items outside of your, in your yard? When can you have too many weeds, too tall a grass? Cause I don't mow my grass. I let the goats eat it. The goats love grass, you know? And they do a pretty good job at it most of the time.
Yep. I don't know. Can you define that in Caitlin?
But that's, that's all I have. And I want to talk about something else that's nothing to do with this.
Okay.
I, I worked all over the country, right? And they have places where the bridges flood. And they have gates, which of course, you know, Connor still has them, different places. And I know for a fact, six cars have driven into Pipe Creek. I don't know how many's washed away. Some of them have washed away down the creek. Why can't we put gates up to protect people? The people aren't very smart. And I know the sheriff's car was in that creek not too long ago. Do you know that?
No.
Yeah. Where it was. They drove right into that deep water.
Probably, I mean, happens.
I mean, you know, it's not a, I know it's a little bit of an expense, but how much is the life worth?
And it's.
You know, you put up simple gates when it's flooding. You could probably even get neighbors. You give them a call, tell them to shut the gates, lock them up. And then when you, you know, let the floods down and you can open them back up. It's, it's nothing more than public safety.
Several years ago, we did discuss that.
Yeah.
About putting those gates up like Fayette County. So we talked to them. And you know, they said it's a problem getting there in time to open and.
Well, I know, that's what I said. Maybe you get like neighbors to, there may be certain ones that will, will respond, you know?
Yeah. It's, it's a bunch of liability stuff, you know, like.
I know. Well, like I said, what about the one that drives in that creek with their kids in the seatbelt? Cause I've heard people say they didn't even see it. They just drove in and like.
In some cases they have barriers up and they moved it to the bridge.
I couldn't be sure.
I said in some cases the county had barriers up and they moved down the bridge.
Oh, well, that, that just shows the intelligence of people, but, but at least you have the barrier. Cause I know, like I said, I've seen several people that said they drove right into water and they didn't see it.
There's, it is very cost prohibitive for us to tackle all of those.
Well, I'm just, just something to chew.
Something, I mean, actually Representative Patterson introduced a bill just last week that would get more money directed to that issue, so hopefully, you know.
And I don't know if you've ever heard of. And I don't know if you've ever heard of Colbert Plus? Whatever I was doing construction years ago when Tom was running the gas station, I got a thing for Colbert's. You can take a Colbert and expand the entire creek of Pipe Creek. It's just like a bridge. You did engineer, whatever, which I don't, so I have no idea of the cause. It might be more effective to, to do something like that.
Pipe Creek's so long and...
Well, no, I understand the whole problem of Pipe Creek, I do.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a...
Yeah, using construction a long time, I know, you know.
But I was thinking, just even if you put bigger pipe, bigger tiles, less flood, you understand what I'm saying? Because most of the time, the flood's not huge, which we do have huge ones, but most of the time, you have bigger pipes, you know, raised maybe two foot on that bridge, by just putting bigger pipe, you'd have a lot less danger. But I know that's more talks, I do understand that.
Yeah. Keeping them in there is one thing, they wash out.
Yeah, well, that's where engineers come in. Okay, thank you, guys.
Right, Gary.
Caitlin, for police mailings, certified. We're not sent, we don't send a certified or any type of, it's a very type of guaranteed delivery, we know that the, they need to trust to know that the property owner has indeed received them when they've been sent out.
Maybe we get a return to sender sometimes?
I'm sorry. The accusation's in here, Tara.
Sometimes we get a return to sender, occasionally we'll send a certified letter, but usually no, because there's a lot of letters to send. But if we need to start doing that, that's fine, it's no problem.
I think it'd be wise to send a certified.
We can definitely do that.
If we're gonna go to, and I understand, though, we're looking at the ten day process, but if we're gonna go to that, we would need to go to a certified mail process where we can ensure that it was delivered properly, that we can do that, and I would make a motion if we approve the airplane, certain changes as submitted, the rules of procedure for complaints as submitted, with the change to certify mail.
Yeah, I think it should be certified, but, again, I want to reiterate that it's not, you have to clean up within ten days. Just that you just respond back to the airplane office that you received the complaint.
Yes.
And once they come out and inspect it, then you can have unlimited time, as long as you're making progress to, to make an attempt to satisfy the complaint. Kurt?
Would, I'm just gonna throw this out there, the first letter, if we can send regular mail, it's more cost effective for our office, we, when we start doing certified letters, we need to apologize about it pretty quick to that. So, unless we don't get a response on the first letter, then send a second one as certified, would that, would that work?
That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, let's send the first one out, maybe the other, whereas you have been, and then second and third.
Certified.
Certified, so we're...
Try to do it.
Are you okay with that, or is that...
As long as it doesn't affect the time limit, if you're giving them a certain amount of days, if you send them out a letter and they don't, they don't get that, or it isn't a no, because we all know that happens.
Yeah.
And then, so if, so the time, if there's a time limit, it should start then when they have received the certified mail.
Yeah. They'll have to sign for it, and a card comes back to them, they'll know.
Right.
Yeah. But it's, it's not that they have to clean up within that, it's just to respond back that they acknowledge that they received it.
That's all.
So, you want to re-say that, John?
So, okay, your statement, I agree, so we, I would make a motion if we approve the rules of procedure with an amendment to send second and third mailings as certified mail.
The Frankville's, he says, instead of not just to the renter, but to the owner.
Thank you, Kurt. We will make sure we're copying both renter and owner address. In, in this situation, we don't always know that there is a renter at that address, we've got a lot of properties, your, your property here could be one that is owner occupied, you live in Carmel, you could have a hunting property in Franklin County, you've got a lot of, a lot of those as well, so we will...
Right.
Do we verify anything?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I know it makes it harder, but you're right, yeah. In this case, you don't get a more structured answer in response from me than the guy in the trailer.
Agreed, if we got numbers of address on file, it's different with the property address, we need to make sure we verify that address.
Thank you, Tom.
So, that's a motion.
Yes.
I'll say... Yeah, all in favor. I don't know, if you guys come up with a way to limit the number of complaints, you know, I don't, I don't know how to do it.
So, could we, I know the APC building, last time we made us suggest it, or they did, that we could file for a change in the ordinance, who could file a complaint? Like, I think it's crazy that somebody on the county can file against somebody that has nothing to do with their property or adjoining their property. So, I don't know if that's an option that could be changed, if ordinance, I mean, APC threw it out there that we could, it would take a lot of work, they said, but we would have to come before you and get a game plan together and change that, but it is possible.
Yeah. Could you look into that, Caitlin, about, or Tara?
At the last meeting there at the APC, what she's referring to is when I said that we could change the law according to the rules, the change to code, but the, the attorney said, our attorney advised us that we cannot limit who can file complaints. He said that's gonna cause all kinds of problems down the road, as far as, what do you call it? Not being fair to everybody. Just because one person has more than one complaint, or three complaints, or however many you put the limit on, doesn't mean that they're all not valid. I, I really don't know an answer to that.
Yeah, it'd be hard to do. Okay.
So, I have a quick question regarding this, and you may be able to answer me. Is there, like, legal documents where we can see and paperwork, like complaints, the complaints in prior years, previous years? Is all that, like, do you know, right for them? So, we can see how many, if it's the same, you know what I mean? Because some properties haven't been, nobody's mentioned it for years, thirty, fifty years plus.
Sure.
But now all of a sudden, it's a problem. Is it, is it just now people stepping up to the plate, like, oh, people moving in from the city, I don't like this, I don't like that? You see what I'm saying? Is it more now just because we have people coming into the country, wanting to be more cleaned up than, like, the city? I don't know, it's a good question, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know. Hard to say. Holly?
I just got a short and sweet statement, and I was asked, we could only agenda to remind proprietors that Dog's Pop has a free property watch program for people that are concerned about their deeds, and it is a free program through Dog's Pop, and as always, they can always call our office there for any help, sign it up.
I've seen that.
Property fraud? Yeah. It's not a big thing in small communities, but proactive, so...
All the counties are doing that, aren't they?
Yeah.
I've seen...
Yeah.
So, they just call your office?
They can call office, tell, if you can help them out.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge and receive the treasurer's report.
Second.
All in favor. Uh, minute meeting? Okay, we have a commissar's meeting, minutes, December the twentieth, twenty-three.
I move that we set the minutes for December twenty, twenty-three.
Second chair's motion to approve the minutes of the December twenty-twenty-three meeting stipulation. There was a lot of back and forth in this meeting regarding numbers of contracts, and assuming that the numbers that are in the minutes are all correct as they were presented in that meeting, but if that's the base, we approve the minutes.
All in favor. Next, we have claims, payroll, and deductions. We have regular claims of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-two eighty-four. Utility is sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars, fifty-seven cents. Payroll of two hundred and twenty-six thou, twenty-two thousand, six, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, and, let me put the comma in there so I can see it, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, seventy-two cents. It's all been approved and stamped by the auditor. So, new good comments?
Make a motion that we approve the claims as submitted.
John has made a motion, secretary, second, it's all in favor.
We've got something to talk about on the subject for the animal shelter. Rob Sig is offered to do his part for, as a, as a county engineer to make a design for the animal shelter, uh, septic system, but it would have to be, since it's commercial, it would have to be signed by a competent engineer, and Rob said he's going to do that as part of his county commitment, so, that'll save us a lot of money if he does that, and, but the county will be responsible for paying for the stamp approval, that has, the person that has to go over it, make sure that everything's good, and that could be up to a thousand dollars, depending on how much time it takes them to go over it. So, Rob, you agree to do that in-house?
I can do that, that is one specialties that I do. I just want to clarify, I'm not an engineer, licensed by the surveyor, but I've had several projects under my belt. For many years, doing work with the State Department of Health and approved projects with review of a licensed professional engineer, so I reached out to an engineer, and he said that they're willing to work with me to do the review and certify after I've done my work, saw it through the smell, so, um, just want to put it out there in public that, for you and the State Department of Health, they're covering the whole state of Indiana, there's not many people that work there, so this process is not a quick process, so I just want to make that known, that once I finish with my work, it's not gonna come back extremely fast, because they get their work, it goes to the bottom list, and then once they get through the review, there might be some changes or iterations that comes back to you, then you can send it back to them, and hopefully you can add, the goal is to get it right the first time, but there's usually some markups or something that they're waiting for. So, as a county surveyor, I can expand myself as that person to do this work with knowledge and expertise in this field, but I want to pull through on authority, the commission to do that before I begin doing it.
Yeah, I'll look at it, formal motion.
Second.
All in favor.
This will probably save the county ten, fifteen thousand dollars, just so it's ready as well.
Thanks.
I have one other thing here, it's a certificate of financial responsibility for the highway, I guess it's for the underground store thing. Have you seen it?
I just, just did prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we, we need to sign off on that.
Make a motion, I'll say this, make a motion and we sign off on certificate of financial responsibility, uh, as required by... Is this three twenty-nine I C?
Yeah, it's for the underground store thing, I think the other company takes care of it before you. All in favor. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? Derek?
I do, man. A couple of reminders, Derek, if you want to go first, go ahead, and I'll go ahead.
Derek Cole, I just wanted to see what, going back to the Reservoir Hill project, what is your guys' goal for that?
Our goal, I guess, is to have the residents up there have a working sewer system without contaminating the, the underground water and stuff, or ecolite, I guess ecolite's in the pond up there, I understand, but...
Because the goal, I mean, the goal right now with the RPQ is just, we've got four and a half million dollars at our disposal, that we need to get this thing over to see if we can utilize that money, and there's, you know, we've talked about the, the cost of even helping include a scope project, we have no cost, little or great cost to them, you know, so to not...
Potential.
Excuse me?
Potential. Some companies require funds for scope.
And they, and, yeah, they do, but they can be limited up front, if, if that's the case. So, you know, we just need to look at it right now and see if it's something that we can do and take advantage of that. One of the things in the project, not to exceed, issues are putting this out, there's a not to exceed number in there, where they're limiting that cost of the project to the amount of the grant that we've been awarded, and so we just need to, let me get a look at it and see if it's something we can move forward with.
It, because the reason why I ask is because according to IDEM, everything is, there's potential for issue up there, but according to your own health department, there's nothing up there.
There's what?
There's, because the health department's been testing up there, and they've found nothing, so...
That's, they've run diagnostics and from...
According to their emails, it's nothing. There's no issues up there, and IDEM's saying the same thing.
That's incorrect, Derek, I'm sorry. As far as the testing goes, we have extremely high levels of lethal wildlife present up there, which will indicate that there is... will indicate that there is very much into that, that homes that we have been allowed to die test so far do not present enough issues. So those four homes that we've tested have no, they are not the issue, is what the health department is telling us, but something is causing, it could be yeast, we don't know.
So is there gonna be more testing up there? Do we have more properties that you're gonna be testing?
Yeah, there's some more properties that they can ask for permission to run die tests on, that we haven't got permission from the property owners. The four that the property owners gave us permission, and anybody that knows differently, correct me, but the four property owners that gave us permission ran clear, they were so die present, okay? But to say that we don't have an issue, I mean, IDIM came back and showed us the issue, and then our own test results showed, I, I was standing in a pretty quickly guy there from this turn of the block, you know?
Cause I know people have talked to Kevin, who was the inspector, and said that there was a potential of an issue, and that they would recommend health department to take it from there, which they've done testing.
True.
And then I talked to Becky, who was the other one, and she said, well, there may be issues up there, but we're not even going to put it to investigation because you guys are running a sewer up there. So again, is your goal to have everybody up there hook up, so you comply with this? Or what?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be the goal in the end, is that, you know, to be able to, part of the original process, the original quote that they had with this allowed for everyone to be able to hook up. Now, we don't know, we, it's up to, if we were to get Brooklyn Lake Regional, they say they, others, you know, if it was the town of Brooklyn, they were saying it was, they're gonna be up to the property owner, up to the, you know, those points where, I believe the Indiana Code, the law said if your septic tank is less than 20 years old, you can delay hook up. There are probably more to that, and I don't have committed the memory that you probably did there, but, I mean, we just need to look at it and see if we can take advantage of this money right now, and what it will allow, you know, us to do.
Okay, if we, if we can't use the money, we're gonna send it back, if it's not feasible, but I don't think we're gonna force anybody to hook up, but if they do hook up now, I don't think it'll cost them anything except from the tank to their house.
That's the goal of the project.
Yeah, but if, if they don't, and they do it later, it may cost them a fee to have all that done. Justin, you got anything to report on the highway?
No, I don't think so. Only when it's a basic girl's notice submitted on the 29th of January for Bockrue and others, and now we just wait.
Thanks for your work on that.
Yeah. You good?
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I have two things that I have, I'll try to be brief on, so, first, I'm continuing communication with CSX, and they, by email and writing, they're asking that the ground that I have for crossing the road is exceptionally good, they're requesting that we get sole analysis or warnings or geotechnical firm, so I've been trying to reach out to the geotechnical firm to accommodate this.
See what it says.
They're very vague on what exactly they're looking at, so I have a 2:00 team meeting on Friday, so if anybody wants to be present for that particular meeting, just in their range of work, you're welcome to get my office at 2:00 for that meeting. Take my keys here, contracted the health to work on additions. It seems as though CSX has been offering little information, little piece of time, every time they review something, they ask for something more than exercise. So this is going on out, this has been taking nearly a year and a half, two years to get through. We feel like we potentially maybe missed another opportunity or window to prepare because they continually keep delay, 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 not getting enough information. So I'm reaching out to a lobby's group called the Russell Group, they are in Washington, DC. We have a fellow by the name of Tyson Bedpath, he's over in the Oxford area, and I sent him an email, someone asking for his help and assistance, and tried to see if he can do something to help us along with this. They specialize in agriculture and things of that nature, so last Thursday, on the 1st, I was over in that area, we flew drone over, and with what rain we had, we can show that the tiles are not functioning, there's about 10 acres of water that was, or that was present in that area, so the field run of water, so it's gonna be saturated, it's gonna cause a problem, it's not drained, and that wasn't a lot of rain, but we're sure it's gonna be worse, cause more damage to the tiles and so forth, so I'm doing everything I can to try to put this together. Again, I can do work to design as a licensed land surveyor in the county, that's according to the Indiana Code, so we can call savings to the county taxpayers in that match, so just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. And the Metmore Medical Clinic, gonna be on the ground tomorrow, the surveyors office is gonna survey for the county, and that'll be something that will be recordable certified surveyors, licensed land surveyor, more than likely save the county about $5,000 or $10,000 a year. So just trying to keep you recorded when we're out. Any questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that.
Thank you.
How you start, Sarah?
Commissioners, I wanted to ask you about a couple of things. Road closures, as you know, are very critical in our area, and I had received some information that NDOT was gonna do a slide repair on State Road 101, 1.6 miles north of State Road 1, is that in 2024? Do we have a date or anything on that?
Um, the other one was, and yesterday in the meeting about the solar eclipse, they said that there was gonna be a project on State Road 1 here, room broke, and that was gonna be delayed till right after the eclipse on April 9th. Do we have any more information about that one?
There were two bridges, there were two bridges in the valley, and a mixed road and one that were to be replaced, like the most recent road closure out there, they got one of those two, they're putting off the road closure to start the repair or the replacement of the second one until after the eclipse, so we have an emergency route on there.
Okay, if you get any information, is there gonna be a total closure, and then how long? If you get any information, please let us know.
I think it is a total closure.
It is gonna be a total closure?
Yeah, just as I was previously, it'll be closed, and I would expect the same length of time, or similar length of time as the prior bridge replacement there.
Okay.
I think it was like 260 days or something like that, the first one.
260, when they closed State Road 14, so.
Something like that.
Months, okay. If you hear of any other closures that can.
Thanks, Sarah.
I have a question for Rob. As Rob to contact the Federal Department of Transportation, I'm curious if you've gotten anything back from them.
I've not received any notes from.
Since this railroad is a part of transportation, we don't know exactly what they're hauling up through, through these farms, and so I asked Rob to contact the Federal Department of Transportation, since they're supposed to be on top of that. So they haven't responded?
Good response.
I saw Rob's email too, regarding that.
All right.
Yeah, I've been transparent about everything, commissioner's been on the, on the jury for a while.
Farmers are kinda concerned about it. Like I said, it's, it's pretty, it's a, the railroad's pretty much just landing on a back burner right now. Thank you.
I'm trying to apply some pressure, but I can't make this sound, Rob.
Yeah. Will make a motion to adjourn?
All seconded. All in.